You not realise I was. Looks like it's working, yeah?
Yeah, looks like it.
Okay, welcome everybody. Thank you to this Energy Sustainability Working Party meeting, Monday, the first of November, twenty twenty one. Welcome to, this is a, this is a working party, so everything that's decided here has to go to the full council for approval unless we get delegated authority. Apologies for absence, please.
We have everybody present except the Chair who's joining later.
Okay, okay. Decisions of interest and, this definitely soil of pecuniary interest of requests for dispensations? Nothing?
No, nothing's been received.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting held on Monday, twenty third of August. Have you got them?
I can put them on screen if you wish.
Mine, please.
The Chair is just arriving.
Let's, let's, um, propose while we wait for him to connect. Minutes. Castle Smith, Castle Alan Lucchini, second. All those in favour, please show. Okay. Can he hear you? Oh, there he is.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, apologies about everyone. The computer just seemed to freeze about two minutes before the meeting started, so I had to reboot it, so, yeah, apologies.
We're up to number four, Tony, if you want to take over.
Yeah, thank you. Minutes of the previous meeting.
So we've, so we've confirmed that, so we're up to five, sorry, five, sorry.
So we're on to actions from the previous meeting that are not on the agenda. Five A, follow up with professionals and WSDC regarding installation of solar panels to HTC buildings, and that's Gary leading on that. I did quickly see an email from you earlier, Gary, which is very good. Yeah, would you like to go through that, please? Uh, you, Gary?
Hello, I'm back online. Cool. Sorry, when I was looking at the screen, I haven't flipped everything. I'm just trying to get everything back up.
Yeah.
Cool, yeah, so I've been contacting various companies based in Suffolk for requests for them to come and view, with a view to our buildings and solar panels. Obviously, we've discussed before that the Art Centre is not likely to get past due to its listed nature. We've already had that in writing. We discussed, I discussed with the, the companies that attended the Leeston and the Zone. Leeston was discounted due to the nature of the fact that access to the roof was too obvious and that the panels themselves could be easily scuppered by people who would climb onto the roof and so on and so on. So each agency then moved across to the Zone. I sent across the two proposals sent through this afternoon. One from Solar East Anglia and the other one from East Green Energy. There is a third one, which I was promised, from Cambridge Solar, that it would be with me today. They even promised this morning that it was arrived, but it hasn't. I did try and pray see some of that information in a, in a document which I sent out. It just needs a bit more work. Obviously, in that document, though, you can see the costings of installation, one of them being at, short of twenty thousand and one of them just short of forty thousand. I think one of the curious things that I think, that I noticed was that the one that was twice the price apparently appears to be giving twice the power. But that would need obviously a bit more research and information gathering on that to be confirmed. I think once we get the third proposal, obviously we'd have three proposals in there and then maybe we could have another kind of look at that, seeing how we can move forward should the committee wish to after obviously looking at the three proposals. So I'm open to, obviously, people's responses to those three proposals, at the moment, two proposals for solar panels up on the, the roof of the Zone. Cool.
I mean, to be fair, we've only just received, yeah, the information. We're still waiting for another quote to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, we need to digest that information, you need to look at it. So obviously, that's come back next meeting, but in the meantime, John.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things.
I think my take on it would be, are we looking, is this the kind of ballpark pricing that
No.
the committee we're looking at, or is it something beyond means?
Well, we're talking about this specifically is, have we not contacted West Suffolk councillors, I asked, about, you know, they could, they'll install it for nothing.
I did send something through, I haven't had anything, I need to chase that up, John.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what I did.
Come in a second. Okay, I'll be there. The, the funding that's available is for businesses, is not available to councils.
Okay.
That's not what they told me. They said it was for council buildings because they've done it on all their own buildings.
Yeah, John, can you look into that then, if you get time?
Yeah, because that, you know, I'm not happy about spending tonnes and tonnes of money on a building we don't own.
No, that's, that's, that's fine, but we need to find all the facts out first, yeah.
I asked about the funding that you had for your gym and they said that was for businesses only. You may have been talking about a different, a different fund.
Yeah.
There are loads, there's about two hundred different funds that they manage. That's why I, I don't understand why we haven't, I mean, look what they're doing, you know, with the AXA one. That is part funded by West Suffolk, majority from the central government.
But if we could look into that and then when we come back, bring this up.
Crack on to that this week.
Yeah, we also have a more joined up spreadsheet. I'd like to know how much we end up paying, what the payback, proper payback is, what our actual, actual consumption is on these buildings.
Yeah, I think that'll all come back to the next meeting, you know.
Yeah, well, let me ask these questions first, Tony, because otherwise we're not going to get them come back, are we?
No, go on now.
These need to be things like how much we're actually using, considering we've just replaced all the lights in the Zone, for example. We need proper bills. We also need to know how much we end up paying whoever the supplier is exactly in terms of pence per kilowatt, et cetera, et cetera. So we need a lot more, not more data.
That, that was a work in progress. I did state that and therefore those are the kind of aspects that we're putting into it, we can get into it. I mean, my take on it is, as you say, John, is it, if this is, if it's a kind of, there's not a desire to spend that amount of money and how, you know, are we going to go through with it? So that's exactly the kind of data that will go in and that we can make an educated and informed decision. So as I said, yeah, that is the kind of information that will go into that.
Yeah, Liz?
Yeah, when we get the spreadsheet, once we've got the quotes and we know a little bit more, could we perhaps have a, perhaps have a like for like comparison? Because I noticed these, for example, if you look at the first two, I'm just looking at, they, um, the kilowatts per annum and all that, kilowatts per hour, what is it, kilowatts h, what's that mean?
Kilowatt hours.
Hours, that's it, yeah. So per, per annum is quite different. The system capacity is quite different and these modules are different. So could we perhaps have a comparison, like for like?
I think what I would also like to suggest is that, obviously, it would be good for maybe bring someone like Miles Messenger in, like we did this time last year, to maybe just have a look and have someone who works in the industry. Because one of my questions, as you just say, would be like, why have they chosen this particular setup? And you've highlighted the fact that there's two different kind of setups being put forward. It'd be curious when the third one comes in and see what kind of setup that is proposed. Certainly, once we put all this together to go to, if Miles would be kind to lend us half an hour of his time just to overlook through these proposals, definitely add Laura, hello.
Yeah, so Alan first and Laura, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. It's fairly obvious that actually the first quote is roughly three times the kilowatt system capacity, isn't it? I mean, it's nearer three than it is twice. And yet the yield in kilowatt hours per annum. No, sorry, that can't be kilo, that column D can't be kilowatt hours, that must be kilowatts, mustn't it, I think? You know, when the sun is shining brightly, kind of, you know, maximum kilowattage. But then column E, kilowatt hours per annum, there's only a sort of, you know, little more than a two to one ratio. So are we, have they done the assumptions about how much the sun shines on a different basis? So I think one of them claimed that they were doing it according to a certain standard and the other one doesn't say what standard they're doing it towards. So it's again, it's sort of like for like comparison, isn't it, that we need to tease out somehow? And then the export income is massively different, isn't it? I mean, it's a massive ratio, isn't it, from even thirteen hundred pounds to three seven five is, is, is again, it's a, well, I suppose, is that a three to one? No, it's more than a three to one ratio, isn't it? So it's, it's all very confusing. Good luck, Gary.
I, I think someone within in foot with, like I said, someone like Miles, who would have the experience of working with this every day and can actually nitpick the figures that they send across, you know, so that the proposal isn't a proposal done on their whim, but actually it's a strong proposal based upon our own requirements.
Laura, thank you.
Yeah, hi. I don't know if you can see when I've got my hand raised by my videos off, but I have my hand raised for quite a long time and I don't think you can see till I put my video on, so I'll put it on next time.
But I'm sorry, Laura.
No, 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 it's fine. I just was like, yes. Okay, so I was going to say something else, but first, Gary, I can forward the numbers you've got to Miles and ask him to have a look. Catch, I can either, no, not now, Cal, your dinner's just about to be ready, sorry. And so I can either send what you've got now, or if you think it makes more sense, I can wait until.
Yeah, I would hold until we get everything in and tidy up the document and make sure it's all a hundred percent ready and then you can have a look. I think that'd be brilliant.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it to him and I'll give him a ring and ask him to just check it over. But the other thing I was going to say is that, yeah, definitely, if we can get West Suffolk to fund, then obviously that's great. But in my personal opinion, whatever happens, I kind of think any amount is worth it. I think it's a really important thing to do. I think, you know, we can't go on relying on fossil fuels and we can't go on the way we are. And I think that at the end of the day, we should definitely try and get the best value we can. But whatever value we can get that is the best we can, I think, I think we should go for it. I don't think we should let the cost prevent us.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Gary, the other thing is to make sure that we ask about the longevity of the solar panels. There could be a difference in that as well. I mean, yeah, that's something we need to be, you know, the quality of the solar panels as well is one of the criteria we need to, to check on.
They both came with a twenty five year guarantee on them.
Yeah, yeah, but can I just chip in? One of them said they had a one percent, I forget which quote, I think it must have been the more comprehensive quote, was saying a one percent decrease in efficiency per annum.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, which kicks in first, you know, when you hit a certain loss of efficiency or the, you know, is that part of the twenty five year guarantee or do you, do they mean against break, you know, after, after failure? You know, it's, it needs an awful lot of room to, doesn't it, really?
Colin?
Thank you, Chair. Just really building on what Councilman James said. In terms of the, just taking the figures at face value and, and absolutely accept everything that's been said about preferably finding somebody else to pay for it and more information, comparability, et cetera. But I did some quick calculations on how many years it would take to recruit the upfront costs, given the figures at face value in front of us. The Solar East Anglia one, which was a thirty nine thousand pound one, is seven point four years East Green Energy, which is nineteen thousand, five point eight years. And if they last ten years, then each would provide, well, one provides thirteen thousand, three hundred and then East Green Energy, fourteen thousand pounds, actual payback. Because of course, once we finish paying the upfront costs, we start enjoying the savings still. Plus, we're exporting energy. So in terms of what Councilman Jones was saying about the benefits of doing it, both would recoup, well, one would be round about the end of our initial lease. The second would be well within our initial lease. So I certainly echo what Councilor Burns has said in terms of being able to find somewhere else, someone else to pay for it, because that'll certainly improve the figures, but they stand on their own merits in any case.
Thanks, thanks for that, Colin. And the other thing as well is I should think the actual kilowatt hour rate will be going up pretty shortly anyway with the, with the comparison in the energy costs, you know, across the board. Yeah. Yeah, Alan?
Just one other query, in case I've misunderstood. It sounds like the Zone could be the worst of all possible worlds in looking for external funding because it's neither a business nor is it a business independent of us nor is it owned by us. So that sounds like it might be a grey area, you know, a building that we happen to be renting. Sounds like it might not attract any funding at all.
But maybe it's thrust in the gash shape with the owners of the building as well. You know, I'm sure there's something that could be done there. Yeah, we need to look into that.
Yeah, but that was, that's, if they go for it, that's as, as a landlord, is there a landlord grant? You know, it, you know, the mind boggles, don't it?
Yeah, but at the end of the day, if they do fit, it's helping the planet anyway, so, yeah. Okay, any more on that one? So, well, sorry, John, yeah.
Yeah, just to emphasise, the solar panels are for the, not the business who's the tenant, it's the landlords. So the Zone is a, the owner of the thing is a business, not a, not a council thing. That's what I was told as well.
Okay. Thanks for that. So the action for this item is really, if Gary should go away, work a little bit more, get the other quote in and then bring it back hopefully to the next meeting, please.
Cool. Thanks, thanks for all those points. Brilliant, thanks.
Yeah, cheers, Gary. Very well on that, thanks. Yeah, B now, which is the visit to the Energy from Waste Plant at Great Blakenham. Get any updates on that, please, fine.
Yeah, I can confirm that it remains closed to our to visits, visitors at the moment. There is a virtual visit that can be done, but we can't actually physically go there. Chair, what I should say is apologies that the agenda referred to the minutes of the twenty third of August, because we're reviewing the minutes of the last meeting, so it's just the agenda that was wrong. So it's actually the September meeting we're reviewing.
Yeah, okay, thanks, noted, okay. Okay, item C, Big Green Week, and that's Sarah and Colin. If you'd like to go over that, please.
Yeah, Sarah put on a, a great sustainable market. I'll let her talk about the, her view of how it went in terms of what we got done and who she got in. If I let you go first, Sarah, then I can fill in on, on some of the other stuff we did.
It went okay. We got some people in. If we had a longer lead time, I think it could have been easily doubled. Friends of the Earth, for example, and some of the caterers, and then we would have had more time to work with Sharon. So under the time constraints, I think it went okay. It got some coverage, it got some people down. The, the children's workshop was very popular and all the participants were pleased that they came and seemed to enjoy it.
We had people come to the recycling and also we had our tree wardens who were busy giving out people tree seeds to plant and some people planted them there and then. So that went well. It might be said that, of course, the, the lead time Sarah was referring to was the lead time provided by the government. They, they only came up with this idea, I think, beginning of September. So of course, yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have six months to plan it because nobody, nobody had heard of it.
Yeah, Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Sarah for such an amazing job in such a short amount of time. It was really hard. Like, we all came up with like some really good ideas for people to invite and most of them couldn't come because of the short time. And I just think it was really well done to get the amount of people you did in such a short time. And it was really good. And I really look forward to doing another one with a longer lead time so that we can get all those brilliant people we wanted to get to come to the next one.
Yeah, I think if we did it again, we, it would be, we'd just move on to bigger and better things next time.
Yeah, on, on that subject, is it something that we should recommend to the council that we do have another one in, in the, in the future, have a bit more time to organise stuff? Colin?
Yeah, there were certainly people who said that they would like to come along and do something. There was some interest particularly in terms of people doing some stuff on clothing and on some repairs, et cetera. It's a shame that the chances of the Repair Cafe have slightly receded in terms of what could be done at the Cheltenham Community Centre because actually there's, there is potential for, certainly in terms of helping people learn how to sew a button back on or change a zip or something like that rather than throw clothes away. There was, there was interest from a stall holder to do something like that. So we could, we don't have to wait for A, another national event. We can hold these things whenever we wish and certainly have a discussion with the West Suffolk about perhaps going on top of their market again.
Thanks for that, Laura, and then Safran.
I just wanted to say that if you need a proposer, I'm about to burn the food, so I have to, if you need a proposer, doing one in as long as you think we need Sarah, maybe like two months or maybe we need more than that, three months? I don't know, but.
Three months, that spoils ourselves.
Okay, well, I propose that we do another one in three months.
Okay, you've got a proposer. Any seconders to that? Liz, yeah, seconder. So we're, we're talking around one in three to four months or the springtime. When, when do you think you could do one, Sarah?
That's putting me on the spot. Let's say not before Christmas, let's discount Christmas and the panto.
Yeah.
And, and go March, maybe?
Yeah, it'd be great for this beginning of spring, wouldn't it, really?
Check with the stall holders, Sarah, to see what dates they could, a good number of them can make. That'll probably be the defining point.
Yeah, okay. So we've got a proposer from Laura, seconded by Liz. We can hold another one of these events early next year, arranged by Sarah. A show of hands, please. I think it's pretty unanimous, thank you. Safran, you need to say a few words?
I was, I was just going to say something about doing something for Christmas, but it sounds like there's quite a lot going on already, so.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that. Okay, Eddie, any more on that item? Okay, we'll move on to the community survey, which will close on the twenty fifth. Colin, have you got any info on that, please?
Yes, so we pulled that out and around. Thank you to John and Aaron for also promoting that. So it is actually still open. I've asked Sarah to push it again and hopefully John and Aaron can give it another push too. So we've had over a hundred responses from Haverhill area and they've had three thousand five hundred over the whole county. So I suspect many of those will be from kind of the, the bigger towns anyway. So it'd be good if, if Haverhill can make sure it pushes a few more in. So, yeah, we'll, we'll hopefully, we've at least kind of pinged on the County Council radar, as I don't have an up to date travel plan for Haverhill and enough people have taken part that they can make some sense of it and we can then pick up the discussions with the passenger transport team as far as sustainable transport around Haverhill is concerned.
Thanks, I think, Colin. Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is the public forum. We've got no members of the public, I take it, Colin?
We may have some watching. I understand that some of the tree wardens were intending watching it and they were invited if they wished to actually take part to come on the call, but that was entirely down to them. And so if they're, if they are watching, then it, it, that's great, but we don't have anybody taking part to talk.
No, okay, thanks very much. We'll move on to item seven, Cheltenham Open Space Community Orchard. Item seven A, to agree any specific terms in respect to the landscape architect work being delivered by Groundwork East. Would you like to speak on that, Colin, please?
Sure, Chair. So the council have approved in principle the funding of the work to produce the plan for the use of the whole space, including the community orchard as a kind of first win. I suspect that in terms of setting out the different area, areas that might be in the Cheltenham Open Space, given the orchard needs to be somewhere that isn't overshadowed by trees and is reasonably easy to access as it's going to be the first thing there, that we could probably pretty well guess in a kind of X marks the spot type way where the orchard's likely to end up. But it'll be good to have it contextualised by everything else that might go on. I don't know whether anyone, having read the architectural survey proposal, has any questions or comments on how we can polish that up and give Julia as much steer as we can in terms of our expectations and aspirations? I can put it on screen if you, if you wish.
Yeah, if you could, Colin, that'd be good, just to refresh everyone's minds. Yeah, it's a bit small if you could, somehow.
Wait, Zoom decided to put a little message to me up right over the words.
Yeah. Yeah, John?
Sorry if you can see me, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You've got outdoor rooms for school teams. I thought the lease allowed, didn't allow us to build anything on this site?
An outdoor room isn't an actual room. It's a kind of, I don't know, it depends on how you want to do it, but kind of a hedge round area or just a, a, a moan area with wildflowers around it. There might have some, I don't know, somebody might carve us with a chainsaw, might carve us some interesting tables and, and stools and stuff like that for schools to come out. So it's, it's an outdoor room, it's not, it's not, it's not an enclosed room.
No, I, I, I guess that's what it was. It's, you know, it's quite a, you know, brief document, isn't it? Is there any, you know, obviously creation of urban sport park, we still haven't decided whether that's going to happen or not, of course. That might have been done a few years back, but we need to revisit that. From a, you know, youth point of view particularly as well. The community orchard, although I did see the, you know, all kinds of local apple trees and things like that, I was a bit surprised why we're not, why we're, why we're assuming that other than the, the soil is suitable, whether, why we couldn't use any other type of apples or anything else like that. Is, the suggestion obviously is community orchard, but we seem to be going ahead and assuming that we are going to have a community orchard. Are we, have we actually, you know, I, I know nothing about orchards.
It would be difficult to imagine that we wouldn't. It's a fairly standard item that most towns have and more and more are being made. It's a, it's a good way of getting people involved, given the amount. Um, given the amount of space it would take up compared to the amount of size we've got. Um, it's been, it was pretty well the first suggestion made and just featured in the proposals the entire time.
Yeah, and and to be fair, um, Haverhill was a great apple growing um area. Uh, we used to, when we was kids, go apple picking at um.
I'm not.
Pivers Farm, yeah.
I'm not saying it's not, Tony, I just wondered why it's all what appears to be like stroma pipping, wicked birth honey picking, why they're why they're particularly, I presume they're worthwhile things. But I just wondered whether, uh, when we talk about orchards, um, I was hoping to see different types of fruit rather than just apples all the time.
Uh, there's um apples, plums, pears and cobnuts on the list.
That's good, sounds good to me.
Um, so basically, uh, the the list is uh is those um uh trees uh which were produced locally to Haverhill, um, mostly as cultivars. Um, they're kind of um uh traditional heritage planting trees that there would have been when there were lots more orchards around, uh, these are what you would have seen. Um, and clearly, in terms of promoting and maintaining uh uh trees that are local to Haverhill, um, it seems to make sense that you would grow local varieties here. And if there's if there's a fantastic Worcester apple tree, there's nothing to stop us planting one of those. But in terms of uh making space for it, then really the the good people of Worcester probably have a responsibility to maintain their their own tree uh brands rather than um necessarily us. But we could grow whatever we want, but these are these are the local um varieties um that are still possible to grow, they're still available, they they haven't died out altogether.
Yeah, Safran?
Oh, I was just gonna, just to add to that, um, about sort of the types of varieties chosen um is to do with sort of how it interacts with the other trees and things um in in the environment. Um. But, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Right, John, did you want to come back to things? Sorry, then Liz.
Let me, let me, um, well, there's a couple of things, um, I mean, I would have liked to see cherry trees there as well. You know, they work, they grow perfectly well. I've got a very nice one in my back garden that produces a hundred pounds weight of cherries every year before the birds get them anyway. Um, I was a bit concerned about the thousand pounds for the lectern style display panel. Is we got plenty of carpenters locally who could build one of those quite easily. And I don't suppose one minute it will cost a thousand quid, even though wood is quite expensive, of course. Um, I was also a bit surprised about the stuff from Amazon. Um, would we not be going somewhere local as well? I don't know, but.
Um, we can do, but this is a budget, not a target. So it's it's in terms of putting a budget together, it's it's finding where you can get things from. If we're able to get the same quality of items uh locally, then I'm all for it. Um, uh, but obviously, when you're compiling a budget, you have to try and get the information from somewhere. Um, I apologise if I was a bit lazy using Amazon for the um space and folks. But I there was quite a lot of research needed to actually find um uh local varieties of trees. So um I was balancing my um uh efforts at that point.
Yeah, thanks, Liz, then Laura, please.
Um, I was just gonna ask about the installation of the trim trail there. What does that mean exactly with the trim trail? Does that just mean around the outside?
Yeah. Uh, well, th- these are things that were suggested um by the Working Party when it met. Um, uh, and the trim trail, the suggestion is that there will be a moaned footpath around the site. And at the time, uh, people said, would it be good to have a trim trail just so every now and again on that footpath, just round the side of it, there would be the occasional element of a trim trail. Uh, but whether that would be um the sort of outdoor gym that you see down at the um motte field, or whether it would be a a kind of a wooden kind of thing that you you see at um East Town Park. Um, uh, that's, to be honest, that's A, that's why we're engaging a landscape architect to come up with some proposals. And that comes back to the Working Party um uh to um discuss whether you like the ideas or not.
Okay, I just wasn't sure of the meaning of the the term trim trail.
Yeah, so basically, it's um you get the kind of, it's a bit like the 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 um outdoor gyms where um uh equipment uses your own uh body weight. So it might just be something in terms of of two stumps of unequal height that you step up and down off of them, or there might be a um a chin-up bar, um, that sort of thing. Um, yeah.
So keeping us in trim, in other words.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Laura, please.
Yes, hi, sorry. Um, so, um, I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, yeah, so I I didn't actually notice the thing about Amazon in the papers, or if I did, I forgot about it. But um Amazon are a very unethical company. Be quiet. No, honey, um, sorry. He said, can we plant pine trees? Um, um, yeah, no, so because Amazon are really unethical, if at all possible, I would prefer to use more ethical. Um, uh.
Suppliers, yeah.
Yeah, suppliers, um.
That's fine.
Um, the other thing I was gonna say is that I would hope that any kind of signage or lecterns or whatever that we were installing would be the minimal amount that we need. Um, and that we would be very focused on the sustainability of anything. You know, we don't want unnecessary stuff and we don't want to be unnecessarily using unsustainable materials. So I would hope that whatever we do need to put up, we can focus on, yeah, it is for you, honey. Um, that we could focus on sort of sustainability and, you know, use recycled wood or whatever um as much as we possibly could.
Yep, definitely. I think it'd be a good idea. Hopefully, there might be something actually that in terms of if, you know, if there's a decision to uh thin some of the trees around the outside, which was um suggested by the Suffolk Wildlife Trust, um, the the wood that comes from that uh doesn't need to leave the site, but gets used in different ways. Um, I've been taking photographs of some really interesting work by um uh 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 woodcutters um to create um uh benches and and uh tables, et cetera, using fallen wood and making some sculptures, um, some really, really interesting things that I think people might find uh quite attractive. Um, but, you know, we'll we'll see. At the end of the day, what we don't want to do is um uh engage an architect and then um decide everything ourselves before the architect gets started. So uh this is really the architect acknowledging the things that have that have been said before. Um, understand the site um and and take advantage of all the skills that they that they bring with them.
Yeah, thanks, Colin. Yeah, just going back to um the tools and the, you know, the tree work, et cetera. Obviously, um, yeah, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, yeah, let's talk to the West Suffolk Council, they're buying those tools all the time. Hopefully, we can just piggyback on what they buy and um they hopefully are getting a a good price for that sort of stuff anyway. Um, you know, we may be able to use their sort of procurement services. Um, and obviously, they're using um people to do um tree sculptures, you know, quite often. Um, they did the one outside the um Leisure Centre a few years ago. Um, and many other um tree sculptures, et cetera, around um, you know, around various evidence. But, yeah, I say, we have got, you know, West Suffolk Council, we can hopefully, you know, use some of their services. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um, well, Laura?
Uh, sorry, I just wanted to say that um I know that the tree wardens are really itching to kind of, you know, get started and know what is going on with the orchard and everything. So um I I and I know that we do have obviously a timeline for the planting and everything. So I don't know, I don't know if there's anything in particular that we need to decide today that will help with that sort of process of um sort of actually, you know, coming up with a plan with timings and stuff. But if so, um.
Yeah, I need to order the trees, councillor Miller Jones, that's that's the key thing, otherwise we're gonna miss that. Um, and we need to um get the um soil improver uh in kind of, well, certainly before the trees go in. Um, but uh the key thing really, I mean, bear in mind, this is the only thing that we're asking today is to approve the budget, not the individual suppliers. Um, but we do need to get those trees ordered, that's the one part of the element. Um, and and those are available local varieties. Um, if we want a cherry tree, we can add cherry trees, we can add in. And we can take some of this out if people think that there there's too many apple trees i- in the orchard. But in terms of, it's easier to add trees on to the list than it is if we miss the order, uh, then we're not doing anything for 12 months, 15 months in fact.
Yeah, um, John, then Safran?
Yeah, so I I was just going to, uh, well, Tony mentioned about tools. Of course, there's loads of people like myself who've got garden tools, sitting there not doing very much. So that might be something. The other thing I I'm a little bit worried about is, um, you know, we talk about moaned footpath, I understand all that, and I I know what trim trail is. But what are we doing to make sure this is disabled, accessible?
We're engaging the services of a landscape architect.
Who knows all about disabled discrimination.
I'm absolutely sure they do, because because the architects have to learn that sort of stuff. And in any case, if they don't, I do.
Yeah.
Okay, good, all right. Can I just ask, um, you mentioned that you're doing this, you're doing this, you're doing that. Are we not delegating this to any other members of staff to do?
I'm sorry, okay, I'm I'm talking generically. Um, when I say I'm going to do something, all the other staff kind of just kind of shrink back in terror.
That's fine, that's fine, that's right, Colin. So I just I just didn't want to make sure that, you know, that we are spreading the love, as it were.
Yeah, yeah, cheers, John, Safran?
Um, about the sort of soil improver, would it be worth uh organising a date with the tree wardens to get that done?
That's the hope, so that it just to to break the activities down so that the uh what we don't want to do is arrive on a day to plant the trees and then discover that um the ground either is concrete or is light concrete. Um, uh, it'd be far better if we've actually uh done that bit first. Um, so it would still be the same people doing it, but it's but breaking into two very separate sections of work.
Okay, I can um, I'll pass pass that message along and see when uh they're available.
Yeah, one one point I've just thought about, you reminded me of, um, Colin, is that I think all that land is um drained. There's there's um drainage in there, so um you may want to point that out to the architect as well, just to check on that. Because maybe they do, or maybe they don't want to interfere with those drains.
Okay, so you think there's there's clay land drains or French drains in there?
Yeah, I think that may be French uh drains or 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 clay drains, I'm sure that was drained.
Okay, that'll be interesting. Okay, thank you, that's really useful to know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Safran, sorry, or was that just a residual hand?
Yeah, sorry, I just forgot to take my hand down.
Yeah, okay. Um, Laura?
Yeah, um, sorry, I don't know if you actually mentioned this, because I have missed little bits here and there. But I was just wondering about the lizards, Colin, because I know when we were talking in this sort of warm-up, like more summer months, you were talking about needing to move on the lizards and putting out the metal to. But I'm assuming that in the winter, I don't actually know where the lizards go in the winter, do they hibernate? I have no idea.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, okay, so what does that mean, they will be underground?
So so basically, we borrowed, um, well, we we borrowed um uh tins from uh East Town Park corrugated sheeting. Uh, and they were laid around the site. Um, uh, particularly the the kind of end where we're we're likely to be doing work um uh during September, uh, we had a a enough hot days um there to um uh the end of September, early October, we said enough warm days where it was really very pleasant indeed. I mean, when we went there with the um uh landscape architect, it was a really, really lovely day. Um, and basically, uh, we've had Kevin uh sneaking up on the um uh corrugated tins. And uh some lizards uh uh would sit on top of it and bask. Um, uh, some would be underneath, uh, and uh I I was there on a couple of occasions um uh with him and took the opportunity to look to, uh, and he never found a single thing. So whilst that's not definitive, that there aren't any, well, it does mean that it's not crammed silly with them so that we can uh dig on the site carefully. Um, but with a a reasonable expectation that there probably isn't an awful lot on site. And that does make sense because um the uh the the wildlife corridor is very narrow there. Um, and uh for the lizards that, I mean, I I I went down to East Town Park and 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 um went round with Christine to look at the uh the tins they did there. And literally, that was like a a week beforehand. And we could see, you know, the the uh an adder basking on there and and lizards underneath. Um, but uh we found nothing and it's it's really how they would get up railway walk. Um, because it's there's not enough real wildlife corridor there for such slow-moving animals to successfully migrate. So I think one of the interesting discussions we'll have if next year, when perhaps throughout the summer, we do some more um testing, if we still find absolutely nothing, I don't know on the ethics or the the biodiversity side of things, is whether or not um we introduce species there if it's suitable for them to be there, but there's no way they could get there. Um, uh, it but certainly at the moment, there's no evidence that there are any.
Yeah, that's a that's a shame really, because um when the railway first closed when we was kids, we used to walk down the old railway, and that's one of the things, the sleepers were still there for um a good few months, maybe six months or maybe even a year after railway closed. And in the summer months, that used to, the whole way along that railway, used to be actually full of lizards. And we used to go down there for the lizards. So hopefully, if we, you know, once we do get the um, you know, the site up and running, is that they will gradually come back um and um repopulate it. But, you know, because when the railway was there, that was absolutely full of lizards all the way along. Yeah. Yeah, local knowledge. Okay. Right, um, I think we've had a good discussion on that one. Um. Uh, have you got enough info, Colin, or?
Uh, well, I mean, we're I we're not looking at the suppliers particularly, but I note what you said about Amazon. Um, but we need a budget um in order to do anything at all. And it would be useful um in terms of being able to order trees if, uh, you know, noting um councillor Burn's request to uh uh to have uh additional tree species there. And there's certainly space for that. But in terms of the the budget as it stands and in terms of the tree species, so I can get on and order them, if people are happy to approve those, um, then we can get on with the project. Obviously, if we're not happy to order these trees, we we're gonna miss um uh the planting season.
Okay, um, so um we've we've got proposed budget around three thousand pounds um for the for the orchard, if I'm if I remember correctly. Um, yeah, Laura?
I'm happy to propose that.
Okay, so proposing a budget of three thousand pounds and the species of trees that have been mentioned. Um, have we got a seconda for that, please? Yeah, that's Alan, um, and a show of hands, if you can, please. So is that, is that everyone? Um, yeah. Okay, let's carry it, thank you. Okay, um, item eight. Has anyone got any um items that they would like to propose for the next um meeting? Next agenda items for the next meeting? Other than the ones that Colin's already got in mind? John, sorry.
Sorry, hang on a sec, hang on, hang on, sorry, hang on, sorry. Um, I wouldn't mind an update on um where we stand on the lighting projects, the energy-saving projects we've got. I mean, I know for myself, like, you know, Ben and Co talked to me, but it'd be nice to get it for the group to know where we stand. Uh, and any, you know, have we noticed any savings? I know it's difficult with Covid, coming out of Covid and everything, but it might be worthwhile finding it out. Thank you.
Yeah, good idea, John, yeah. Laura?
Um, I don't know if it's a bit um of a sort of long thing, but um I wouldn't mind um. I don't know if it's a bit of a sort of long thing, but I wouldn't mind having a revisit of our sort of policy and action plan that we wrote, because that was quite a while ago. And we made quite a lot of claims in there of things that we wanted to do. And obviously, you know, we've touched on quite a few of them, but it might be worth just to kind of remind us all and renew us and give us some new sort of ideas. So it might be worth just having a little quick run through our policy and seeing if we're sort of meeting those things or if there's more that we need to be doing.
That's a good idea. So a review of the action plan, Colin, if you could have that on the agenda, if that's okay.
So I just, so I just remembered another one. What happened about the electric bike?
We haven't done anything with electric bikes simply because there's not, we need to actually have the people back to be able to ride it. I was, Safran and I went to a conference organised by Baber last week, week before last. It was supposed to be a county wide conference for parish councils. But they forgot to advertise it, to be perfectly honest. So there was a fairly sort of restricted number of people there. But we were talking to a company in Great Yarmouth that provides electric scooters. And I was asking them how things were going with the government trials on scooters. And they thought there was a possibility that the government might announce something in the early New Year. Because clearly, the scooters would be significantly safer and probably more useful than the bikes in terms of people going around town. As you know, Karen had rather nasty injury on an ordinary pedal bike. And the number of people willing to ride an electric bike slumped somewhat. So I do appreciate councillor Burns gave funding out of his locality budget, which is appreciated. But it may be that a electric scooter that can trundle along pathways would work better.
To be, one second, John. To be fair, I don't think that goes down too well with the public looking at Facebook. They're universally hated. You know, people are running around. And they seem to be, the main use is potentially drug running and all sorts. And I did see a thing on the media, I think it was yesterday, some poor sixty odd year old woman was crossing the road with her shopping. And some lad on a scooter just bowled her over, left her with a broken nose laying on the floor and decided just to leg it. And some bloke tried to confront him, he punched him in the nose and then jumped back on the scooter and just shot off again. No registration number on there, no insurance. You know, so I'd be extremely wary of scooters running on pavements.
Yeah, that's basically what the supplier was saying, that the way that they've, the government has kind of mixed two things together in terms of the kind of testing of kind of London Boris bike type system everywhere else. And scooters has been difficult. They were saying they would have preferred if they brought in a law straight away that required insurance, helmets, registration. In other countries, they have the QR code prominently displayed on the scooters. And failure to display that is an offence. It links the scooter directly to the person. In much the same way that you can get the same antisocial behaviour with people driving cars. But the registration plate gives all the information for it. So, yeah, what you've just said very much echoes what the scooter, and actually, they say electric bikes as well, but what the scooter provider was saying. You don't have to do fifty miles an hour on the things, of course. There's always somebody who's willing to break the law.
Yeah, I think you've got Alan, sorry, John, Safran, and then Alan, I think.
Yeah, just very quickly. Yeah, there was a report actually out of Cambridge. I don't know if that's one that Tony's alluding to. They've had umpteen accidents in the last 12 months with electric scooters. I know the police in Suffolk are dead against them and everything else. And certainly, my offspring who works down in London are, they said, the bane of their lives in terms of the police. But the other thing I was gonna mention, Colin, of course, it's on my floor here, is the infrared camera that I've still got.
That'd be good to get that back, actually. So because now it's coming to winter, we can actually, we can test that out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my premises again now it's winter and just see how that looks. But yeah, we need to start getting using that up. Cheers.
Yeah. Thanks, John. Safran?
I think I might have just been adding to a point with Colin, so I don't think I meant to hand it for anything.
All right, right. Yeah, Alan?
Thank you, Chair. I know bikes can be dangerous because I've fallen off mine and broken my wrist in the past. So, yeah, they can be dangerous. But I think scooters are a hell of a lot more dangerous. Where are the brakes? You know, I've got two brakes on my bike and they're hydraulic and I can stop if I, my brain is plugged in and I know what I'm doing. But, you know, I just, I can't see that a scooter is safer than, you know, I mean, all sorts of things. You know, your weight is across the centre of a bike if you're not hanging your bottom off it in some weird and wonderful way. But your scooter, you are always lopsided, aren't you? At the moment, you've got a load to carry. Where's that going to go? You know, you can potentially have a pannier or a saddlebag or a basket in front on a bike to carry your clipboard or, you know, minimal gear that you're taking with you between buildings. I don't see how that works on a scooter unless you're carrying a bag and then you're top heavy. I just, I just don't buy the argument that scooters are safer. Thank you.
Potentially, as Colin said, if they've got a QR code on and they register someone, someone does some simple, you know, training on them. And they're kept on, you know, on the roads as, you know, push bikes are meant to stay on the roads. So that there isn't that conflict with pedestrians. Yeah, I'm sure in the future, there is a, you know, good place for them. I mean, they're only a mode of transport. And if they get people out of their cars and reduce congestion, you know, that is a good thing. But I just think, you know, obviously, there's some trials going on at the moment. I should think there's a huge amount of information coming back. But I'm just getting fed stuff from, you know, the public and stuff that I read that, you know, at the moment, I would say ninety percent of the public are pretty well frightened of them because irresponsible behaviour. They've only sort of really come out in the last few years. And some younger people, not always younger people, are treating them as toys and just, you know, being a little bit irresponsible. Yeah. Okay. So items there to go on to the next agenda, hopefully. Is there any more suggestions at all, anything? No. Okay. What we've got then is to arrange the date of the next meeting. Colin, you got anything in mind?
I don't actually have any date in mind of what councillors would like to do. I don't kind of think whether or not the list that Vicky produced had the Energy and Sustainability Committee on it.
Well, maybe it's something you can sort of send some dates out and we can all.
Yeah, I'll check on that and come back as fast as I can.
Yeah. John?
I'm showing the date of the fourteenth of December, Tuesday on the calendar.
I'm just opening the calendar now.
I've got that as well.
Although seven o'clock, we wouldn't normally have it at seven, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Vicky has indeed. She has put it on there. So, yeah, the fourteenth of December. But it would be six o'clock if that's okay, because to try and help councillor Miller Jones out. I'm not sure it did much, but.
Can Alicia just change that time then for us?
Yeah, Laura?
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, Tuesdays are great for me because Cal goes to his dad, so I can actually do Tuesdays. I was just gonna say, I know there's a lot of stuff to fit around, but I do really like to come to these ones if I can. And Mondays and Wednesdays and Thursdays and Fridays are terrible, but Tuesdays are really good. Yeah, so that's great. Thanks.
Okay, that's it then. Just to wrap up with me and thanks for everyone's input. Great.